Good morning, everyone. We could call this meeting to order. Happy Valentine's Day. Jake, roll call, please.
Keisha Johner.
Here.
Mark Ramey.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda?
Make a motion to approve today's agenda?
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johner?
Hi. Item number three is communication. Do we have any communications board or Jake?
None from my office.
Okay, all right.
I have none.
All right. Um, I will say we did receive some applications for the EMS Advisory Board. We'll have to further review those and proceed how we want to go with that. On, if there's no other further communications, on to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda during which we can hear any public comments that are not on the agenda below. Is there any public comments? Do we have anything online? Onto the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approval of today's consent agenda.
I'm going to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Hi.
Johner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
On to business. Item up, uh, number one is this, um, discussion with Legislative Update with Kelly Myers. Um, I believe Kelly is online via Zoom.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, yeah, happy Valentine's Day. Um, so, little update from Iowa Capitol. Um, things are really, well, depending on your perspective, moving good, great speed, moving fast or too fast, depending on, like I said, your perspective. Um, a couple of weeks ago, one of the governor's priorities, um, educational savings accounts, known by some others called vouchers, was passed, um, and, I mean, very quickly in the Iowa State House. That is gonna cost about $300 million each year for the next several years. The reports I saw were up to 900 million over the first four years. So, um, that was her, one of her primary priorities that has already passed. Um, last week, another priority, uh, medical malpractice reform was passed in both chambers, again, moving very quickly. That had been something that had been worked on in this building for several years and with the super majority was able to get done this year. Um, the other thing that we were monitoring, um, last week was the passage of-
Kelly?
Yeah.
Smart. For mid-mal reform, what did they, what did they do? What was the action that they took?
They passed a cap on non-economic damages, so things like pain and suffering. Things that can't be quantified, like economic damages, obviously, or like medical bills or lost wages, things that you can put a number to, things that are hard to quantify and put a value on, like non-economic damages are the pain and suffering. And so hospitals have a hard cap of $2 million and physicians have a hard cap of $1 million. And that was what was, um, what was landed on in the House. Both chambers ended up passing that, the original bill called for a $1 million hard cap on everything.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so property tax bills are starting to come down. Last week, we saw Senate File 181, um, had a subcommittee and the way that bill was explained was that, um, legislation passed back in 2013 on property tax reform had a mistake in it. And so, um, after the Department of Revenue sent out the rollback percentage back in October of last year, someone in LSA, um, that's just the Legislative Service Agency here, it's a non-partisan, group that helps with both chambers, um, found this mistake and pointed it out. Unfortunately, no one bothered to, um, let local governments know from that point when they discovered it. Until they saw a bill here at the State House where it's going to basically, um, fix that error, they are saying that, um, this mistake would overtax property owners 127 million. So this bill adjusts that mistake and leaves the local government scrambling, kind of to fill the holes in their budgets. Um, lots of local governments came and basically, basically objected to this, saying, hey, the state made the error, the state should fix the error. Or give us another year to figure out, because many local governments said, we've negotiated union contracts in reliance on this particular number. You know, we've, some governments have already set their budgets. Iowa City came and said they're gonna lose our 1.7 million will be the impact that they have to figure out how to deal with. The Senate didn't do an amendment and push the deadline back, I think it was to the end of April, but did not agree to, um, give the local governments the money for their mistake. The House is now, or, excuse me, the bill is now in the House. And, um, I went to the Subcommittee in the House Ways and Means Committee on that bill. Basically, the local governments came and said the same thing. The House reps were not clear as to whether or not they were gonna do anything or if they were just gonna pass the bill as is. So, we're still monitoring that to see how that shakes out. Um, other, um, property tax bills, yeah.
Yeah. Jake, do we have any ideas of what, any estimates on impact yet, or do we now have enough clarity to know?
Um, no, it's still, it's, um, on the residential rollback is what the, the percentage of the decreases. And now that residential rollback is wrapped up into the two-tier commercial and railroad and things, it's really hard for us to quantify that. It was a, it's potentially a 1.8% swing down on, on our, uh, just our residential strait that's not encapsulated. Potentially could be $40 million in taxable value, potentially. That's not tax dollars, that's just the taxable valuation, that's what this is all about.
Yep, got it. Thank, thank you. Kelly, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I guess I would encourage if you have problems with that, that you need to talk to your Representative Bowden and Representative Kniff about that. Representative Kniff is on the Ways and Means Committee. So, um, that's a valuable connection and relationship to have. Um, like I said, other, I mean, property tax is a, um, goal for both chambers and the governor this year. They want to cut it. They say that every door they knocked on this year was complaining about the high property taxes that people are paying. Um, however, I mean, the local governments are saying, well, that's how, you know, we fund our government and how else are you gonna allow us to fund that? So on and so forth. And, um, there seems to be a bit of, um, tension, if you will, um, in that area. So, uh, House has put out House File 1, allegedly that was given that number to convey and communicate the importance of property tax reform in their caucus this year. They did have a subcommittee on that bill. However, I don't think it's going to pass as it is currently written. Because, um, even, um, the, the tax organizations came forward and said, hey, you know, it would freeze, um, valuations at like 102 and a half percent. And, um, even like, um, Taxpayers Association was saying, you know, listen, this can really cause problems, like look at what it did in California. And people can be living in the same neighborhood, same kind of house. One person will be paying significantly less, the other person will be paying significantly more. People who buy new properties or fix their properties up would be hit and penalized for property tax. Therefore, you wouldn't be motivating people to keep their properties, um, um, in working order or attractive or so on, you know, and up to date. So, um, I think they're gonna reconsider that and we're not sure at this point, um, how that will pan out. Um, meanwhile, the Senate has a different, um, take on property tax. They have two property tax bills. One has a subcommittee this afternoon.
Can you hear me?
Uh, Keisha, you had a question?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Um, House File 1, I do think we need to make note that in that it had to mail notice to property, to mail, um, notice to the property tax residents for proposal of, you had to mail them to everyone in that for proposal of issue of bonds. And also, this could not, as of January 2024, um, could not exceed 103%. So, yes.
Yes, yeah, okay. So, um, on the notice, I mean, many local governments said, hey, I get why you wanna do this, but it's very costly, it's very, um, labor-intensive. And there has, there's little ROI on this, because people don't read it and, you know, we're not sure that this is really the way this should be done. So, I think they might be reconsidering that. They did pass the bill out of subcommittee, but I got the impression that there would be amendments to the bill. And I will follow up on that.
Hey, Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
Can we talk about, uh, Senate Study Bill 1124 that's going to be on today's Subcommittee?
Yeah, so Senate Study Bill, um, 1124 and 1125 are the Senate's versions of their property tax reform. 1124 has a subcommittee this afternoon and, um, we will, if we're not already, we'll likely, oh, I did last night, um, declare against this bill. It, it's divisions, and I'll learn more about it this afternoon, um, when I go and to the Subcommittee. But it, uh, reduces the amount that counties and local governments can, um, like, enter into lease contracts, purchase contracts by 30% without having to have an election. But, um, taxpayers, so everything that's in the code, um, it reduces that amount by 30% and which triggers an election to be required. It requires all local government, say what?
Bonding. So, so, um, when it says leasing, it's also referring to bonding. So bonding out of the general fund, um, your annual payment of principal interest not to exceed 350,000, down from 550 per obligation size. It changes-
Right.
That's how it'd affect Marion County.
Yes. Um, there, we, uh, financial report triggered and requiring, uh, local governments to provide a financial report, which would list all bonds and notes and other obligations, um, to, um, arguably to inform the taxpayers. Um, there would be levy rate limitations, um, for general and rural. 350 per thousand for general and 395 per thousand for rural. It would-
Answer here?
Yeah.
It is general supplemental levy, um, for us at the county that pays for IFRS and benefits. We could only grow due to a natural disaster in that levy. That's how the code reads. And when, when it says $3.50, that's what they mean, $3.50. There are several other counties, even, you know, further south too, that are well above $3.50 of the general fund levy. So it significantly hurt them. Go ahead, Kelly.
Um, it repeals Chapter 300, which is a public education and recreation tax levy. And then, um, would require counties to levy 33.75 cents per thousand for a brucellosis and tuberculosis levy eradication. Which I'm gonna go more about that as well this afternoon at that Subcommittee. But that is their, um, one bill that they're gonna do for property tax. Senate Study Bill 1125 would trigger the, um, the Iowa, which is the water quality constitutional amendment that was passed in 2010 that has not been funded. The Senate has tried several years now to try to get, um, monies to, um, to fund that. And last year's was about, uh, sales tax, a penny of the sales tax going to Iowa. This year, it would impact a, a local option sales taxes. So, we need to be watching that as well. They have not yet scheduled a Subcommittee for that one. It also, let's see. It impacts the elderly property tax credit, which modifies greater than 70 years old, yeah.
Hey Kelly, it's Mark. Sorry, I had my finger on the button.
Yeah.
On any of these bills, are, are they doing any financial modeling at all to under, so that counties can understand what the impacts are? Does somebody have responsibility over that from a legislative standpoint? When they throw out these numbers and the different methodologies and they say, hey, this is gonna impact your county by X amount? Does anybody have responsibility to do that up there?
Well, if they have, I haven't seen it. That doesn't mean it's not being done. I mean, um, the Ways and Means staffer, um, particularly in the Senate, I know has worked here for years and years. And I believe understands that when you turn one dial, all the other dials are impacted. But as far as, um, financial modeling, spreadsheets about how it's gonna impact every county, so on and so forth, I have yet to see that. Um, if they are doing that at all, I don't know. I've heard comments made, and it's not towards Marion County, but I have heard comments going about, um, the frustration of the lawmakers here at the State House because some counties, um, don't budget the way the state does. You know, the state sees what the Revenue Estimating Committee says they're gonna have and then they have a requirement to, um, to work within that. And, um, and not even spend all of it. They have intimated that, um, some counties, you know, spend and then they set their budget on what they decide to spend versus, you know, being conservative and spending what you have. And they wanna put, it's my impression that they wanna stop that kind of budgeting and go with a more conservative approach. But the problem is, is that impacts everyone. And even those counties who are already operating that way.
I wanna make sure I read between the lines of what you just said. Are you saying that we're on that list of counties that, that spend and then budget?
No, no, not at all. That's not. I think it's some of the larger counties that are allegedly performing that way.
I understand. So I, one of the things, Kelly, as you go through this process, if you run into somebody that does this on the Ways and Means Committee, I'd sure like to have a sit-down with them and understand-
Sure.
Because-
Well, I think-
Whether it's Jake and what he has to do, what we have to communicate to our taxpayers, how we will have to reconfigure budgets on a go-forward basis. Yeah, there are some, there are just some discussion items from a county perspective. I think that, that we can add some color to that maybe other counties.
At this point, I think the best bet is to talk, to be talking with Barb Kniff-McCola.
She on that-
She's on the House Ways and Means Committee. She, yes, she is the Vice Chair of that committee. You know, we both know that she's a respected business owner, that she is very, you know, business savvy. She gets numbers. I think that starting point for us is to talk to her about this. How this is gonna impact Marion County.
You can set that up, that'd be great. I'd love to.
Okay.
Hey, Kelly.
Yeah.
Um, just really quick, um, there, the EMA tax levy bills, there's three of them out there, correct?
Yes. Yes, um. So, there are basically two bills, but one has a companion. So Senate File 41 is an EMA bill that allows local EMA agencies to certify and levy. Farm Bureau is declared against that bill. It's not out of committee yet, but it did pass Subcommittee January 24. Um, it has a companion bill in the House, House File 126, which does the same thing. So, we're monitoring those. That's also passed Subcommittee but has not gotten out of committee yet. The other bill is House File 117, and it was introduced by Helena Hayes. And it actually requires that, um, county-wide special levies are, must be approved by the Board of Supervisors. And I've declared Marion County for that bill. I guess I need to know, um, on those other bills, if we wanna stay undecided or do we wanna go to opposed?
And, and, until we know what the financial impacts of these bills are, there's absolutely no way we can take a position.
Okay.
Possible way, not knowing the numbers. We want our taxpayers, if there are mistakes that the Department of Revenue is going to bill that's gonna impact us probably more, uh, imminently. If, if the Department of Revenue made a mistake, we want that money to go back to our taxpayers. That should be a gift. They shouldn't be penalized for a calculation error by the Department of Revenue. I think based on what Jake said for taxable valuation, we'll be able to absorb that well within our general fund. But going forward on how they determine property taxes to be calculated and allocated, we, I, I have to see numbers, I have to know what the impacts are. And I'm just, them throwing out some numbers and different calculation methodologies doesn't give me any confidence they really know what they're doing. Sorry, I'm just being blunt. No, I don't ever do that.
Well, the EMA bills, you wanting to kind of know where we're at with those? Because on the others, um, I don't know if we've declared, have we declared on, uh, all the other?
Well, um, I did declare us, and I can go back and change it. I did declare us against Senate Study Bill 1124 because, um, all the local governments are opposed at this point. And they're kind of taking, um, I mean, a little bit is what Mark said, like, we don't know how this is gonna impact us. This is very difficult to get our arms around this number. But, you know, we know it's gonna be negative.
Yeah.
Um-
Just for my standpoint- opposed to that.
I'm sorry, Keisha, what? I can't hear you.
On Senate Study Bill 1124, I'm not opposed, um, to being, you know, uh, opposed to that because, I mean, it's again, it's the jurisdiction, it's, it's making all the mandates. And we're again, how are we going to fund as a county government? Um, and then requiring on top more things. So, but I'll let the others speak, so, you know.
Steve, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I agree with Keisha. I don't know how, how, how to fund the other government, or other bills, you know, with that Senate, Senate Bill 1124. I have, I struggle with that.
Talking about the recalculation that Jake left it in.
That's, uh, Senate, um, 181.
That's 181. Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm fine with it. I think if the, if the Department of Revenue makes an error that's not in the favor of our taxpayers, they should get their- and we have the budget to absorb it. Other counties, I'm, I'm not gonna worry about them because we run our county in a different way.
I think we're talking about two different bills, though. 181, um, yeah, I, I don't disagree the taxpayer needs to, I mean, uh, get their money back. But I think we're talking about a Senate Study Bill 1124.
Well, which bill, which bill is it, Kelly, that we need? I thought that was the one you just said you were declared.
I think at this point, we're declared against both of them. So you guys tell me if you wanna go back to undecided, um, or stay against the bills.
And tell me the serial difference between the two bills.
So Senate File 181 is the Department of Revenue mistake that they're going to change and that local governments have to absorb the change. Let's start there.
I just told you where I am.
Right, and I think-
Yeah.
Actually declared, there wasn't, um, they hadn't had the Subcommittee yet to say that they were pushing back because I had been in contact with legislation to say, listen, this is the parameters in which, you know, you make us file, um, and have our property tax levies out there. And now, um, you're not giving us, you know, no extension. So they went ahead and did the extension. So that's fine if we wanna come undecided on that or not declare on it. But I can think, um, Study Bill 1124, I'm still opposed.
Okay, so I'll change to undecided on Senate File 181.
And what is 1124?
1124 is the bill that is going to require, um, 30% decrease in what you all can bond and purchase and, or require the reports, require the notices.
Take a position on that without knowing what the map is.
Okay.
Kelly, back to that property tax bill, just for people that may be listening. Is there a simple definition on what mistake was found?
So, um, so Department of Revenue sent out the letter in late October that said that the, um, rollback, residential rollback was gonna be like, oh, I knew the number at one point, I don't wanna misquote it. It goes out to all local governments. And then between October and early January, LSA, the Legislative Service Agency, says, oh crap, the way we wrote this legislation back in 2013 is, um, there's a mistake in there. And so that's then made the Department of Revenue make a mistake. And that's gonna overtax Iowa taxpayers 127 million. So we need to change this, change the law so that we can, you know, not overtax the people. And what that did then was the local governments had already taken that number, relied on that number and built their budgets on that number. And now that state's like, well, too bad we made a mistake and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna change that number. And that, and so some of these local governments, like Iowa City, came and said, this is gonna be $1.7 million impact to the budget we've already built. And I think Marion County, it sounds like, is in a much better situation because there won't be that large of an impact. But for some of these counties, it's gonna be a large impact on what they've already relied on.
No, but it's certainly a lot to ask of some of these other counties that fix somebody else's mistake.
Well, that's kind of generally been, you know, the message that the local governments have said is like, hey, when you make a mistake, you own it and you fix it. And you're just pawning this mistake off on us. And that didn't go anywhere in the Senate. And it's yet to be seen whether it's gonna pass muster or make a change in the House.
Well, so it sounds, so it sounds like, because I'm, I'm actually, if there's, I wanna make sure we're clear here. I'm actually in favor of correcting tax errors that should go back to the taxpayers. I don't care if the counties have to go back and redo their budgets. Happens in the private sector all the time. So-
Yeah, I-
That's in favor of our taxpayers. We should get that. Now, it's-
The argument, yeah.
Funded, Kelly, which is the source of the argument. Should it be the state that funds that because they screwed up? Or should it actually come out of the county budgets? I get that.
Yes, and that's what the, the assertion is by local governments is, hey, we have this, um, taxpayer rainy day fund. This is exactly the kind of thing that it should be used for. So that 127 million should be, you know, given to the local governments to kind of backfill, is the dirty word here, but to backfill and make them pull for the state's mistake.
So, I think we need to be clear on what we're for. We want, if our taxpayers are overtaxed, they should get their money back.
Mm-hmm, and that's gonna happen. The bill's gonna make that happen. The issue is whether the state will backfill the local governments for their own mistake.
Pressure, I mean, is the, who do we talk to to say, take it out of the rainy day fund?
At this point, it's Bobby Kaufman and Barb Kniff-McCola.
Okay, let's set, let's, let's talk. But at a minimum, they have to know we're, this is a good thing when you admit a mistake.
Yeah, I think also that, um, LSA, or was it found in October? And then there was no communication until after legislation started. And so that's where, um, some of the-
Well-
Frustrating.
Yeah, there's always-
It was found in the fall, yes.
Everybody will bring up timing problems. But it doesn't, it doesn't, the serious issue is your taxpayers. If their, if property taxes are an issue, they were overtaxed, give them their money back.
That's gonna happen, whether, I mean, whether the counties are made whole or not is, at this point, is what the local governments are kind of objecting to. Yes, Keisha?
All right, um, I, I don't know if you have, I mean, I don't know if anybody else has anything. I know that we've taken quite a bit of your time. Appreciate you coming on today.
Yeah.
These updates on a monthly basis, so, but, uh, thank you.
Yeah, sounds good. Let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Kelly.
Bye.
Give you, entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
A second.
Johner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Ramey?
Hi.
Onto item number two. Onto item number two is the Marion County Attorney vacancy. This morning. With Mr. Bull turning in his resignation and actually having, working at this, going to work for, I believe it is Ms. Brenna Bird, which is a great honor. We have the, we need to discuss how we want to proceed. And I just wanted to remind the board that we have the option to do a special election or fill vacancy by appointment. And then we have orders of publication of notice. So I'll open it up for discussion.
So. Jake, I know we were having some discussions on the process. Because I think for me, the logical choice is to to actually appoint Jared to be the county attorney. And fill Ed's remaining term until the next election. The question is, what's the next qualifying election? At least that's where I'm at.
So I want to speak if Ed or Jared or anybody from our council, county attorney's office is online, but my understanding is. First step would be if you want to just go straight to special election, that would be run under a special election process and have thirty two days. And do that, it would be a countywide or appoint. And if you do so choose to appoint. We post notice of of your intent to appoint with the publication deadlines of four and twenty days before your next. Time and then that an appointment could be made. Once if an appointment is made, there has been question and quite a bit of research and discussion on. Anything other than township officials, if there's an appointment, the next time there's an applicable election, that position would be on that ballot. So we do have city school elections coming up this fall that will be countywide. Those are nonpartisan elections. Believe at this point, the determination is for a partisan elected office. The the code states that it would be the next general election. So that would be fall of twenty four and also require. Going through the normal processing papers, excuse me, for the primary election. So I believe that's where where we are at this point.
Okay.
So that's.
Kind of whatever, yeah.
That's. Where we are at this point, but there is still some research doing on that question. That question. Does not, well, if the county chooses to go straight to special election, then that's moot. Because once you're elected, you do completely fill the term. It's if there's an appointment made that that next. When would that to fill vacancy be on the ballot? At this point, all indications are it would be the next general election of twenty four.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, Jake. Thank you. And thank you for looking at that. Well, and thank you, yes, the county attorney's office for looking at that. So.
If there's an appointment made, there would be a fourteen day window for reverse referendum. To be submitted into the office and that would require ten percent of the vote at the last general election. So then the gubernatorial election.
Right, okay, good.
So, yeah, I read that as general election would be the next general because you would have a primary and then the general.
Yes, the way I've always understood it. So but there's subject to further. Further research.
Believe we're there. I mean, so if you go straight to special election, it is still partisan office. And so, I mean, they would have to be like county conventions held to nominate the person. So there, it's very unique when it's. A partisan, you know, appointment, that type of thing versus a school board or a city council.
Yeah.
I I I am with Mark also. I feel that Jared would do a great job. And I think to me, that's where that's where I'm at is to be appointing Jared.
Well, I'm also there too. And I believe that Jared has expressed an interest. So I'm fine with the appointment of Jared.
Very good. So I would make a motion to appoint Jared as the county attorney. You're holding your finger up.
I'm sorry. I believe it needs to be decided if you are going to appoint or not. Then we post notification and the appointment comes after the publication.
We have intent to appoint.
So so I make a motion of the intention to appoint Jared. As the county attorney.
Mr. Raimi, this is Ed. I think the proper motion would be that you are going to appoint and not hold a special election. And then provide after that vote, the intent to appoint Jared so that the appropriate notifications can be made. But I think it's better and cleaner to do it in two steps.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Did you get all that?
So motion. First motion would be intent to appoint and not go to special election.
Correct, that's.
I'll second that.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
Hi.
Thank you, guys.
Is there a second or?
I seconded it.
No, no, sorry. A second motion or?
Well, we can do a second motion because we didn't think that we could. We figured that we had to.
I'm just trying to follow.
What's the second motion? What would the second motion be?
It would be the next.
Your intent, so you were intent to appoint Jared, as I believe what was stated.
I thought we had to wait till after it was published.
So the second motion will be on the twentieth.
Yes, yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Item number three. Civil Service Commission appointment. We already voted. Bruce Loeffler, who is civil service. Is that you, Sheriff?
First of all, good choice on Jared. He'll do a fabulous job for us. Second side, so on the Civil Service Commission, I just wanted to publicly thank Gordon Meacham. He's served on this for a long time for us, has done a fabulous job, devoted a lot of time and effort to it. So he needs to step down at this point and that creates the vacancy that's there. We've reached out to Bruce Loeffler, who was a previous reserve for us and obviously retired from Mid-American and stuff. So fabulous guy, great reputation. So I would support that. Well, first thank Gordon and then also support Bruce coming on to the Civil Service Commission.
Absolutely. Excellent choice in Bruce. I'll make a motion to appoint Bruce to the commission.
I will second that. Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Sheriff.
Item number four is the memorandum of understanding regarding reimbursement from M H D S of the county rural offices and social services region, which is the cross for county employees. Is Rachel on?
I'm here.
Could you just give us a summary of this?
Yep, so we originally had this document signed February of last year. And this is a result of the state eliminating Fund Ten. And so in order for us to have a mechanism to pay local county employees that do work for the cross region. And this MOU was created. And we, it was originally signed last February, I believe. And our fiscal agent has requested some additions for clarity. So the the major addition that was included was that the region would fund workman's compensation beyond five days. Should someone be terminated.
And do we know then if the termination, how that works? Maybe I need need more explanation on that. So does the cross then reimburse or does that just come out of the county funds or how does that work?
Yeah, cross would reimburse.
All right, so, okay. I don't have any further questions.
Nor do I.
All right. I entertain a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
I'll second.
Johnor.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Item number five is the Travis Trust Investments.
We have got. We didn't really talk about this during our budget process. We have a shade over one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Christopher, maybe you know the exact number.
Kristen, can I have you take a mic, please?
Oh, yeah, Mike, sorry. Do we have it available?
Thank you for being with us this morning, Kristen. Okay, can you hear me? So we have one hundred and twenty four thousand ninety nine dollars and one cent in the Travis Trust right now.
Very good, thank you. So this trust, it's been under Marion County's care for forty years.
Long time.
Long time. We did a couple of emergency disbursements from that trust during COVID for the Knoxville Senior Center Group. I'm not even sure what the official name is anymore. But to cover some COVID issues during, that everybody was experiencing during that time. But right now, the bulk of these, all of these funds sit in a money market.
Yes.
And they earn what, Kristen, about?
Um, I don't know actually what the interest rate is, but it's very low. I mean, I think it's maybe like. Point oh three or I mean, I mean, it's very low. I don't want to speak for sure, but.
Sure.
I mean, we're we're getting roughly thirty dollars a month interest.
Right. So as I, as I was just thinking about some of the budget issues that we really didn't spend a lot of time on, this one came up. As you recall, the Travis Trust was established. It's a fund put in the county's trust for the benefit of Knoxville seniors. Other than the two special requests that we've received during COVID, we've never really had a request that would fit the terms of the trust in order to disperse the funds. So with it sitting earning, as Kristen said, less than one percent interest, I thought it might be time to maybe instruct Michaela. To put it in a longer term CD that could generate maybe four or four and a quarter percent. I think we're getting some of our CDs are already getting that. Is that true?
Correct, yep. Just recently, we've invested some.
Liquidity is not a problem because CDs are are liquid. You, if you pull it out ahead of the term, you're going to have a penalty, an interest penalty. But it's not like we wouldn't have access to the cash, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to leave the money sit there earning generally essentially no interest. Or and until with such time as we get a request to use it. So that was the point. Thank you.
I am, I'd like to just recall us of last year, I am the one that made the motion regarding the Knoxville Senior Center. That they had to come back and and request yearly for this, for their funding. They had wanted to just receive the funds each year, no matter what, and I said that they needed to come back. I wanted to formal request. So I do think we need to take that in consideration. I don't know when that was made exactly. Mike, do you recall it all? And are you still on the board?
It's April of last year.
Mike, can you just state who you are?
Yeah, Michael Roberts, I'm president of the Knoxville Senior. Center. If I recall, and I'd have to look at my notes too, the motion included a five year plan to allocate the money. X amount of dollars. I want to say it was thirty five thousand each year and then whatever the balance was on the fifth year is a way that it was read. And then we had to come back again, I believe it was in April of each year, give report, let you know where the money's going to and what's been spent on.
Yeah, I do recall something similar. I just don't remember exactly what what their agreement had, so. Anybody, do you have any comments on that?
So I'm assuming that is going to be an ask every year, correct?
And remind me again, Mike, what you said was last year, how much it was? Thirty five thousand is what he just stated, those that are online. But I wondered if there wasn't the opportunity to move some of these funds into a CD because the CD rates are substantially better. And if we wanted to leave, you know, some of this in in that account. And then put some of it into the CD, I think that that would suffice.
Yeah, I'm not sure I agree with that, but I think the point is we've got these funds sitting, whatever's out there that we talked about last year, that's a presentation that has to be made and approved. If it's a thirty five thousand dollar request, we certainly have the funds that we can access to to fund that request. But the assumption is that it'll be approved. And and we don't know that that, I mean, the motion was made last year to to do that. But each of those requests have to meet the terms of the trust. So that's going to be the guiding principle behind that. During COVID, those were some exceptional situations. But going forward, it it has to conform to the terms of the trust. So it has to be for the benefit of Knoxville seniors.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a guarantee.
No, it's not, no. But I do think that it, once we tie up the funds, I mean, generally the CD rates are going to be at least a year.
Yeah.
So I do think that.
I just think that's a better, a better return on that and on those dollars until we have a more cohesive plan on how to utilize those dollars.
Well, if we can get a better return on it, even it's still going to be better for the citizen in the long run.
Yeah.
I mean, the money's going to go far.
And if we approve, if we, Keisha, if we approve a thirty five thousand dollar request, we have the ability to access those dollars if it's necessary. In current funds. Then later on, we can, from an accounting standpoint, reimburse Fund One, once that CD expires, if we want to do that.
I don't know if we can. I don't, I don't know the clarity on that.
What's the clarity on that?
Well, because.
It's all general fund money.
Right, but I mean, I do know the Travis Trust is like you had stated about it being Knoxville or seniors. And it was designated to that. I just don't know if you can legally go back and say after a year, by the way, we're now reimbursing the general fund for those funds. I don't, I don't, I don't know that answer.
Well, we would have to do a little bit of research, but from an accounting standpoint, if you're taking thirty five thousand dollars and saying you're applying this toward the trust. But your trust is in a CD for a year. Once the CD expires, you pull the thirty five out and reimburse yourself for that. Now, if we can't do that, fine. That's ultimately.
General fund can, you guys can use general fund or however you want. The money coming out of the Travis Trust. Not directly to something like the Knoxville seniors, but to pay back, we would have to get, just, we would have to get research on that. I I just simply don't know. I haven't had that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would, I guess I would feel better if Jake could at least research it. And then we'd have better clarity on it.
Well.
Make a further discussion.
I'm going to make a motion to move the trust to a CD earning a higher interest rate. Because that's what we should be doing.
I will second that.
All right, Jake. So move the trust money into a higher interest rate CD.
And Kristen, we'll leave that to your discretion on where to put that money.
He has a second.
Okay.
McCombs.
Hi.
Raimi.
Hi.
Johnor.
I'm a nay. And the reason being is, is I want to make sure that we'd have the clarity on if we can reimburse back into the general fund. All right. Onto item number six, which is Marion County property, one oh four South Sixth Street.
Well, I think everybody got the packet. We did an appraisal of this property back in twenty twenty two, Chris, if I remember that right. So we had Renee pass out the appraisals if you did not have them in your file, but we had talked about. Potentially wanting to dispose of this property. So I thought it would be a good time to refresh our discussion on this. Look at the appraisal, maybe and start to, as a board, think about what we want to do. Understanding we have leases and those have to run their course and and all that type of thing. We just need to start thinking down a different track of sale if our intention is not to renew any of those leases. And how long it will take to prepare us to sell the ground. So, Chris, what would, maybe come on up and just refresh everybody on the appraisal and what we had for a dollar amount at that time and it's been about a year, right?
That is correct. It was February fourteenth, twenty twenty two. It is zoned R three, which is multifamily residential, the potential to sell and then someone convert that into apartments is already zoned for that case. Appraisal at that time was one hundred and sixty five thousand.
And right now we have, who is occupying that space?
Well, technically, we still have both sides of DH. Well, technically, we still have both sides of DHS that have office space there. Child Protective Services would be the only portion of DHS that is ever at the building. Impact left last year, obviously with our remodel of fourth floor, Juvenile Court Services is now at the courthouse. So they were, both of those entities were in the building at one time as well, but they have been gone since last year. The way I understand it, and, and I haven't heard any different, is the caseworker side of DHS that is currently no longer there but has space, they intend to continue to work from home. I believe that is what the, the state is, is keeping in place.
Didn't we make space on the fourth floor for that, them also, though, Chris?
We did, and then with things, the way they shook out with public health, we thought it'd be a better, better reality if the child protective side needed space outside of Sixth Street, possibly public health be a better option for that because just in a meeting or two meetings ago, we were talking about fourth floor becoming a voting space, that area for DHS that we carved out out of Ed's old office, that would actually be Jake's new space.
I guess my point is, we have a, we have, they will have a space, because that's the only, that's the only side of DHS that we required.
Yes.
To, to house, okay.
That is correct, and we, in, in a nutshell, we have plenty of space. I mean, there's, there's no issue with finding space for, at the most, two workers.
Well, I know, I know, we've, we've been having this discussion for quite a while, and I, I'm in favor of divesting ourselves of any, and property that we really don't need to have. Why, why heat and cool something we're not using? We do have a lease until September thirtieth of twenty of this year.
Of this year, right?
Yeah, and the lease is in your packet, I asked Jake to put that in there, so.
So, you know, if we, if we're serio, if we're serious about getting rid of this property, we probably ought to be letting them know, you know, give them, give them a heads up ahead of time.
Right, right, no, absolutely.
It's, um, September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And I think if I remember call, right, Steve, I think you dealt with them last, and I think they started communication like in May or June.
And it was fun.
So, but yeah, I, I think we have all discussed that, yes, I think we're in agreeance on Sixth Street. I just would like to make sure that, you know, whether the, the, we finish the lease and then go from that direction is probably the best, I think, in my, in my mind, but.
Well, and I, yeah, we have to complete the terms of the lease.
Yeah.
I think that the issue is that we want to start a process whereby we're going to have to give notice to the tenants that are, is our intention not to renew. I don't think there's any issue with us doing that sooner rather than later. So they can make their plan, you know, in accordance with whatever the direction is from the state and the direction we need to accommodate them from the county standpoint, and then begin the process of preparing the property to sell it, to list it or whatever we have to do to do that. I think you can do that concurrently.
Yeah, I, I know that they have, you know, if their, if their, if their funding were reduced or something, they had, they'd have to give us sixty days.
Yeah.
So I'm not even sure if they're the half time.
No, that, that building, I would say at most once a week, you see a vehicle there, and that's for a short period of time. Other than that, the building's predominantly empty. No, we did preemptively, so I removed all of that building from my budget going soon as we roll over July one. So we preemptively went in, updated things that needed updated, nipped and tucked some, some issues that we do would potentially be, you know, something that somebody would get hit on. So we're in a position where we can sell that building whenever you folks decide to do it, and it's in about top working order, and I only address that because you had made a comment about, let's get it ready, well, it is ready.
Okay, perfect.
We're, we're ready to list, money's already been unbudgeted for that building, so.
That's excellent, no, I think the, the sooner we can start that process, the better. What about, so that appraisal, it's about a year old. I, I think Jake, from a process standpoint, to establish value for something of this size, we've got a particular process we have to go through, correct?
Disposition of county property has a, has a process that you would go through, there would need to be, you guys can decide how you want to sell it, you list it, put a for sale sign out front, do a sealed bid process. There would have to be a public notice and a public hearing of your intent to dispose of.
Similar to the, the county home.
Exactly, like the county home, it's just a matter of how, how you guys want, there's no limit on how you market it. It's just a decision you guys have to make on how you want to do that. Years, years ago, many years ago, former board tried to divest of this property, I think, when they weren't using it and they put a, advertised it for a sealed bid process, but they put a minimum bid on it, and then it didn't get any action.
Right.
And so, you know, negotiation, I believe that's up to you guys, how you choose to do that, but you do have to do those with the notices and public hearing.
Okay, no, I think that's great, Steve?
Yeah, 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 I, I understand, you know, depending on the market and people, whether they want to buy or not, but still, it's costing taxpayers money just setting it.
Yeah.
Whether it's sold or not.
And we can go through the sealed bid process, and if we, and if we choose, and we, we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to accept the bids.
Right, uh, correct.
So, similar to what we did with the county home, we established, we did a very similar thing, we established a floor on what we would not accept, I think we even did it twice.
There would be an advertisement probably of, you know, your sealed bids and stuff, I'm not very familiar with that, I'm sure Ross, county attorney's office would, would have to guide us through that somewhat.
So to get this started, would you need a motion then to begin the process for disposition of this property?
Yeah, I think it's probably a couple of different steps, first of all, to make sure you, if you do intend to not renew that lease for the escape, with DHS case management, you want to, want to make sure you're done with that and there isn't anything going on past that. And then, um, yeah, I guess, um, decisions would, you'd have to decide how you want to market it, and then a motion to intent to sell, I guess, that would create the publication for the notice. Not, don't have it right in front of me.
No, 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 I get, I get it.
Those, those two stuffs. And I would like to stress that, I mean, yeah, I think we do, to give them notice, but also to let them know that we do have, you know, ample space, you know, other, other places, you know, locations.
Yeah, we tell them we have a sponsor, but I think I'd like them to make them.
It has nothing to do with the east side of, of space, or space.
Right.
It says in here, it's about so much space we have. Two different things, that this lease is for the non-required DHS case management, so the assumption there is, well, I guess this is the, two things. You're just, you're not required to provide this space, this is them and, them and the county coming together for a space, they can have their offices anywhere. If you want to try and get a new lease with them at public health, then that would be a whole new negotiation. I thought the public health side.
Yeah, no, I agree, just letting them know that it would.
Right.
Because we're term, you know, we're selling the building.
I mean, as part, as part of this process, we would have to give notice of termination and go through all that.
Yeah, I thought the public health side was only for the pieces that you do have to require, are required to provide some office space for, even though they're working from home. But if it's both sides at public health, that's fine too.
It's not, it's not both sides.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but if, if we were so inclined, I think what Keisha's saying, we could offer space if we wanted to.
Sure.
I'm thanks to saying on the paying portion of it, because, you know, they have been paying us, and if we have space available, that, that's opportunity. We can refer to that agreement at a different location.
Okay, I, I follow you. Now, we'd have to do that through administrative services again.
Are you willing, are you saying you're willing to handle that communication because you have experience?
Yeah, it was quite the process.
So I'm going to come back to what I said before and make a motion that would begin the process for the disposition and sale of one oh four South Sixth Street with all of the attendant action items that go with this.
Second.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Jake, I will ask, is that communication then started to notify them, is that something that your office, or how do we, where do we, who's, who, who does that, I guess? Um, I know it's us, I guess, and then, yeah, we need to have, work with the county attorney's office if we're talking about notice.
Good, great, thank you. All right, on to item number seven, C step, and the LDJ Rise Project.
Yeah, so here we are again. The last engineer's estimate that we utilized was from August of twenty twenty-two for the LDJ Rise Project, for which we used that estimate plus an additional ten percent contingency that I added to apply for the C step funding. The most recent estimate was based upon final plan review by the Iowa DOT in which a few minor things were added and inflation in those last six months. And the result of that was about a seventy thousand dollar increase on a four hundred thousand, or a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar project. So we went back to C step, there were provisions in the original agreement about increasing, because we were not utilizing the maximum allowable amount for a project of this size and type. So this amendment takes us to the maximum allowable C step funding of two hundred thousand dollars from one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which will take up about half of that increase. The contingency that I had in the estimate absorbs the remaining minus about ten thousand dollars. So we just hope bids come in good at this point.
And our county costs remain initially the, our initial cost.
If bids come in ten thousand under the engineer's estimate, yes. We will have options, I mean, ultimately, you can reject the bids. We will have options here, the bid letting is scheduled for February twenty-third. Plans and specifications are out there, they're posted on the engineer, Garden Associates website, they went through all the proper channels, they're also on our website. There are, there's a pre-bid meeting coming up for interested bidders to meet some of the rise requirements. That will be held at Garden Associates office. So as far as this, this agenda item and this addendum to the C step agreement, I would recommend approval to take us to the maximum allowable amount. And I guess we'll just cross our fingers and hope things come in good.
It was kind of interesting the other day when I was reading on some of this, that LDJ have gotten some grants for their expansion, and I think they're, they're doing their expansion now, so it, it's, there's things happening.
Yeah, they're going to be obligated to that effect as part of the rise agreement.
Yeah.
And then Tyler, I'd like to also say the local contribution from the county standpoint is not changed.
As of now, it does not change.
Yep, okay, all right.
All right, let's make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-three dash eighteen.
Second. Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Item number eight is Marion County Soil and Water Conservation District MOU termination.
So this is a discussion item, I'm going to take you back about forty-five or fifty years here, maybe, Steve, were you around then?
Not long, forty, fifty years, no.
So, uh, so in the seventies, there was a memorandum of understanding between Marion County and the Marion County Soil and Water Conservation District. Basically stating that the SWCD would provide technical assistance in the event of a proposition by a landowner or otherwise to outlet tiles or, or place tiles in the right of way or through the right of way beneath the road. So as part of that, there, there is an Iowa code section that applies to this, there was one back then, it's since changed, but there is still an Iowa code section in effect today, today pertaining to this, for which we, we have to permit that. And it does state that through available funds, the county should participate in the cost of that tile crossing of the right of way. So our previous resolution from nineteen seventy-nine, I think, I think the date on the memorandum of understanding was nineteen seventy-five, but the resolution established, made reference to the MOU, but also established a not-to-exceed amount. So Marion County would contribute up to five hundred dollars for any potential tile crossing that was requested by landowners or farms.
And approved by, yeah.
A, a, and approved, yeah. So this recently came up because we had a situation where a property, so I've been here, it'll be ten years later this year, and this is only the second time we've ever had this request. So that's a little information there, but, so this was the second request that we've had. We were kind of questioning the location of the tile crossing, maybe there was some, an alternative option, and it would take some work to determine that, that we weren't really willing to put in, so we went to SWCD for their technical assistance for the MOU, at which point they said they no longer had staff and didn't do that sort of thing, and their roles and responsibilities have changed, which doesn't surprise me, you know, five decades later. So, and NRCS took a little different role as well in that timeframe, so from that conversation, the S, Marion County SWCD sent a letter, which I included in your agenda packet, basically requesting termination of the MOU from nineteen seventy-five. At this point, my recommendation would be to accept that resolution, per the county attorney's office, you actually wouldn't have to do anything. They believe that letter is suffice for termination of the agreement. My recommendation is maybe just to accept that letter as termination of the agreement from Marion County's perspective. And as far as the resolution, my recommendation on the resolution would be to dissolve the nineteen seventy-nine resolution and default to the Iowa code, at which point we would, and we would continue to budget, by budget, a thousand dollars a year in this line item for tile lines for this very purpose. Again, not utilized very often, but to me, we, what other counties do, some counties have policies, some have resolutions establishing minimums, maximums, percentages, costs based on the type of road and, you know, up, not-to-exceed amounts and whatnot, so there's lots of different options. But what I, what other counties do that I, I actually liked was basically, they utilize the language in the Iowa code that says from available funds. We budget a certain amount per year, once those funds are gone, they're gone.
Yeah, yeah, that was going to be my question, once, and, and the ultimate responsibility for, for determining whether it's, it's a, it's a needed tile line would fall to your department, correct?
Correct.
And you, you would, you would oversee that. But I, I like that idea that we go back to the Iowa code, and once those funds are expended, well, you know, first, first come, first, first come, first served, basically. Okay, I like that idea.
So that would be my recommendation, is to dissolve existing MOU resolution, default to Iowa code with available funds being budgeted annually by our department on a first-come, first-served basis. And sometimes, you know, rightfully, there, there's a, there's a need there for those tile crossing. Other times, maybe there's a different option, and we can assist property owners with that, which we do. And sometimes, we know they go in and they don't even ask, so. Or they just come in and ask for a utility permit to do some tiling, and they go ahead and do it themselves without asking for anything.
And the code you're referring to is that four sixty-eight, six twenty-two?
Correct.
Yeah, all right. Makes sense to me, so, to me, the motion would be to dissolve the nineteen seventy-nine resolution and default to Iowa code four sixty-eight point six twenty-two as a first-come, first-served basis within your budget? Or do you just want to say with.
If you, if you dissolve the resolution, don't you go to Iowa code?
We default to Iowa code.
Just default to Iowa code.
So just dissolve the resol, just dissolve that, the agreement.
And, and this is a discussion item, if you want me to come back with a resolution clarifying this or, you know, officially terminating the previous resolution, I, I can do that too.
It's going to be cleaner for you and.
Well, I know Jake, yeah.
I don't know.
Jake and I discussed this, we, I didn't want to, I didn't know the direction from you all, so I. From you all, so I didn't provide a draft resolution at this point. Uh, but a resolution does, you know, leave some breadcrumbs for fifty years down the road, we know what, what happened.
What you sent is, that looks like my writing.
Probably is.
On that MOU where we changed the code section number.
Yeah, at some point it changed.
So Tyler, then we could just accept, um, the MOU, acknowledge the letter and.
So acknowledge the termination letter.
Yep, and then have you come back next board meeting with a.
Sure.
Resolution. No further discussion?
Well, I'm in favor of that.
So we're acknowledging, so Steve made a motion to accept the letter?
Yeah. Accept the letter and.
And then.
Have Tyler come back then?
And, yeah. Because I don't know how to say this, accept the letter.
That's, that's all we need him to do at this point, and then we'll have Tyler come back with a new resolution.
Did that letter mention, oh, okay, we're gonna do the resolution for the code section, okay, yep, alright.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Marion County Public Hearing Portion. Um, this is of the Marion County FY maximum property tax levy dollars, this is the public hearing section. Um, so the public has anything to say, anybody here or online? Nothing further? We're taking a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Raimi?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Item number ten is resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, which is the Marion County FY twenty-four maximum property tax dollars. Jake?
So, um, this is the second piece to what we, what we just saw, and this is a new requirement that came in like three or four years ago now. In Iowa legislature, and it is a, um, two-step process during budgets, it's the first is the, um, maximum property tax dollars. Uh, we have to do this and cities have to do this, I don't believe schools do and townships don't. But, um, it's bas, it's, the board is saying you will not tax more tax dollars than this amount. And it is only for general and rural services, that does not include debt service. Um, and mental health is no longer involved either. And these numbers in your resolution are the new certified values that we're still working with. Um, at last year's levies, and that was what was created for version one of your budget process that you guys went through. Um, it has been recommended from department management all along with Senate File one eighty-one out there to continue down the normal process. And so from a timing standpoint, we need to do this. So these tax dollar amounts you're here are current certified values at last year's levies. And you cannot exceed this, the board has stated publicly during the budget sessions that you had no intention of exceeding this and. Will probably be lower than this when, with your final budget with a reduction of some nature to the. General supplemental levy, version two of that, uh, that is the current version in place now. As a reduction of the supplemental levy of twenty cents. We'll see what happens with Senate File one eighty-one and what you guys want to do. Senate File one eighty-one will definitely make the numbers lower than this as well, so this is literally a cap cannot exceed. From your initial version.
We'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Raimi?
Aye.
Item number eleven is the Road Department update.
Want to move to table Tyler? Oh.
Is that a motion?
Oh, no, I rescind that, I take it back. Steve dared me to do that.
Wouldn't surprise me.
Tyler?
Yeah, so, so, um, you know, we obviously met a few weeks ago going over budget and. Operations surrounding budget and department health regarding budget and, and that sort of thing. Uh, really this road department up, I try to do these quarterly, as you know, um, so we're a little late here, but. Uh, what I wanted to kind of highlight today was kind of our community outreach, because if you remember at one of my. Third or fourth quarter updates last year, I talked about how over the past couple of years, we've really focused on departmental operation efficiency. Uh, you know, do being as efficient as possible, changing our operations, um, and, and working with our employees and, uh. Morale to assist in being as efficient as we can as a department to better serve the taxpayer and improve level of service. Now, we're gonna take kind of the next step in that is outreach and education to the community, um, to eat, to. Gauge their take on level of service or change their perception on a level of service. Um, it's something we've always done, uh, but how can we better serve the public, uh, sometimes we don't know, so. One other, one thing we did kind of following up on the last couple of years and then also just kind of gauge on departmental morale. Uh, I did an employee satisfaction survey, I gave you a few of the numbers from that. Part of my budget meeting regarding wage, some of the wage related questions. I'm not gonna go through that whole, uh. Survey results, if you're interested in that, you guys can definitely ask me at a later date, but, uh. We did meet last Friday, uh, with our department here, the entire department, I think we had one employee missing. We talked about a few different things, I had sent them a memo to clarify the raises that were approved as part of the budget process. Uh, there was a little confusion around that and rightfully so, as it differed from other departments and. And if you didn't listen to the meeting, you may not have understood, and then kind of a highlight of what is potentially being proposed, I told them it was again draft. Uh, for probably the next agenda item here on benefits, so what was proposed from Holmes Murphy at the last meeting. And so when going over those employee satisfaction survey results was really for me and for the employees to know where kind of the department stood as a whole. Related to some of those questions, but also, you know, there were some clarifying things I wanted to address. Uh, get more information to help better our department and, and keep doing the efficiency things that we were doing last year. Um, by providing what we need and, and maybe some minor tweaks, so out of that, we got real. Six tangible things from Friday's meeting that we could look into as a department and potentially change, and three of those we've already implemented as of Monday. I mean, it was that simple, you know, we didn't know what we didn't know, we got feedback from the employees and they were simple things that we changed and. Basically made them unofficial policies and standard operating procedures from Monday forward, so. Uh, we'll continue to monitor those and, and, uh, make sure they're working the way. Uh, we had hoped and, uh, meeting the needs and satisfaction of the employees. So, uh, there may be more to come on that, uh, and I can update you at a future meeting. So as far as improving public service and perception, we're considering a public survey, uh, with targeted topics on. Departmental operations, other counties have done this and had some good success, others not so much. Um, you also, you just have to take that with a grain of salt sometimes, and you really have to understand your, your audience and your sample. If we do that, so, um, we don't have any details, that's just kind of a bullet point we want to consider for the future. We're also working, Tammy's been working on a guide to rural living. Uh, Marion County has one of these, it's really old, it's the standard that, I don't know, maybe you know Steve. All counties kind of have a really similar version of this, Jasper County has one. Yeah.
He's correct.
So I want to say it was from the early nineties, maybe.
Yeah, I think it was.
That the guide to rural living came out and it's like a twenty-some page document, that's not what we want, we want bullet points and lists and hi- high level. Information for the citizens, we would work with public or environmental health and zoning to get pertinent information in there. We, I've already had conversations with realtors and getting their input, how do we distribute this information? So basically if you move to the country, what does that mean as far as the level of service, where do you pay your taxes? Um, what, who do you contact for various issues, but we want to condense that twenty pages to, uh, you know, maybe a. Amplett style or something like that, so Tammy's been working on that and has some really good information, who do you contact for your utilities even? So, which doesn't really pertain to the county, but, uh, it's just, but man, uh, maybe realtors already do that, we would get their feedback on things like that. Policies and permits, um, Scott has been working diligently on this, uh, our entrance permit is our most utilized permit. For driveways and property split reviews and that sort of thing, and it is online to Beacon right now. Um, thanks to Missy and Andrew for, for helping us with that and Nicole. And we've been utilizing that for a while, um, thankfully because we were experiencing high number, you know. Triple, if not quadruple, permit numbers year after year right now compared to three or four years ago. And, uh, Scott has draft permits for three or four others. And then one large one being our utility permit going online. I, I may come back to you here in the near future about a fee related to utility permit. I think at one time we did have a utility permit fee and then that went away. Um, most counties do, I believe, so that's something we're considering. Um, I, there's a lot going on with road funding, and I send emails to city councils and mayors often. You know, a lot of our towns have fifteen homes and a hundred residents or less that are incorporated. Um, they get road funding, but trying to keep them informed of things that I think would pertain to them or impact them. Uh, you know, I send them emails, but my goal is to have annual meetings with each of the city councils, including Knoxville and Pella, you know, there are things. Right now, there's lots of money out there for transportation related things and there are potential opportunities for us to partner on some, so. Moving forward, I'd like to have those, I mean, it's not that I don't meet with them occasionally, we've met with Harvey, we've met with Melter Dallas on occasion. Um, St. Knoxville and Pella, we've had a good partnership with their public works and, uh, city managers over the past few years. Uh, but just continuing that and, and building upon it. And then there's other public interest groups that, uh, that I've been becoming more and more involved with. As transportation relation, transportation related issues become political. Uh, you know, there's lots of legislation out there regarding road funding, nothing really being brought to the table at the moment. But, um, you know, uh, our road, uh, map twenty, time twenty-one bill will expire here in a few years, that's gonna be discussed. Um, you know, there's lots of legislation regarding overweight limits, there's some on the table right now that were some passed last year. Those have severe impacts for us, cost us lots of time, money, have impact to co-ops. So recently I've had meetings with many co-ops, Agribusiness Association, uh, Farm Bureau wants a meeting. Uh, Martin Marietta has been in my office, brought down some corporate folks, and it's all related to how do we better serve them with our secondary road system? So we'll continue those types of discussions. So as a department, uh, we've done some educational and outreach, uh, which was a goal that I established back in twenty twenty, so we've been trying to do more of this. And we've had some good opportunities and partnerships mainly with our school systems. So, uh, last fall, summer and fall, I presented to Pella Rotary and the Knoxville Noon Puanas, just updating them on. The secondary roads system and departmental operations and budgets and, and I think a lot of that is eye opening for folks on. How roads actually are funded in Marion County. Uh, we did a video recently with Emily regarding, uh, snow remover operations and winter operations, we did one of those last year, I think this one was a really good. Uh, in-depth look on how we function, so that's on the Marion County's YouTube page. In December, Scott, our, uh, engineering technician, he went to North Star Elementary and did a surveying demonstration where. Basically showing, yeah, thank you, that first one, the first one, yeah. So, um, oh, Scott wasn't the first one, you can figure it out. There, I'm gonna go cover them all, so, yeah, Scott did a surveying demonstration basically showing the tag students how big an acre actually is, and then their project was to design. A park or something like that within that acre. Um, and so he had them flag out what they thought an acre was first and then use our GPS equipment to show them, and it was a really good experience. And also, you know, we kind of throw a quarter out there and show them how accurate we can get. Can we come back to that quarter and zero in on it with our survey grade equipment? Then recently Brian and Jay, uh, they took the preschool students on a tour of our yard because they were doing a tubes and tunnels. Uh, program within the preschool at West Elementary. And so they came and looked at some culverts and walked through some, you know, just to take a look and do something outside of the classroom for them. And then just, uh, last week, I visited with a group of sixth grade tag students in Melter Dallas, which they were doing a program called Create Change or Spark Change, where the students came up with. A project to. All on their own to promote change, some are walking dogs with elderly, uh, establishing food banks within Melter Dallas. And this group of students actually came up with a curve outside of the city limits that had a high rate of crashes. And to my surprise, it had a very high rate of crashes, it's not one that was really on our radar. And, uh, so I had, they presented to me with some potential solutions and then I had prepared for them. Uh, kind of my rebuttal and, and what I saw from the crash history, and it was a really good interaction, so, uh, I really enjoyed that and hope we can do something. Uh, to that effect in the future. Then. Then in March, Knoxville is doing a career week, and last year I participated in this. Where I went and talked to students, uh, this year we'll be doing a demonstration, uh, engineering related demonstration with those students. And I believe they have invited Twin Cedars, Melter, Dallas and Pleasantville High School students to attend as well, so that's for K through, or excuse me, nine through twelve grades. So my last bullet here is departmental operations, uh, as you know, we've, we've done a lot of budget shuffling and not planning on doing a budget amendment, we've. Absorbed six hundred thousand dollars in inflation within our budget, uh, for rock and fuel mainly. We have notified our employees of the seven percent reduction. That in our rock tonnage for the next fiscal year, and at our meeting, you know, we talked about, uh, different techniques that we can do to help. Salvage and, and, and maintain our roads in maybe a slightly different manner than we're used to, to try to, to save as much rock that's out there as possible. Um, things we want to do anyway, uh, just, just reinforcing that and making more of an emphasis from our supervisory staff to stay on top of that sort of, sort of thing. We have not, we have, within the last couple of weeks, um. My road maintenance supervisor and I have discussed and I made the decision to not fill a vacant position, so we've had this vacancy since November. I think, man, maybe I didn't provide it to you, my fund balance projection in the budget meeting, I have that if you would like to see it, but. As I look ahead for the next five years and kind of the departmental health, budget health. You know, we have a fund balance, secondary road fund, as I look ahead, I don't want to scare anyone, but I don't like what I see. And we've talked about that, we started talking about this last year during budget time, and I told you the tiers of cuts that we may have to make, we've made tier one cuts this year. You know, a few weeks ago I presented one point five million dollars in cuts from our budget, and, uh, so just looking ahead. We, uh, didn't, I decided not to fill this position because of budget moving forward, I don't want to get overstaffed and, and be in a really tough situation a couple of years from now. Also, we are going to take this as an opportunity for cross-training, that's something we've talked about over the last, uh, couple of years with our staff about. Kind of our lack of cross-training over the past few years amongst our various positions. But we are looking at a significant amount of retirements, uh, in the next two to five years, and we really need to focus in on that. As far as, uh, equipment and truck driving experience and techniques. And, and just try to gather as much knowledge from those older folks as we can that have thirty-plus years of experience in the road department. We currently have a part-time position posted, this was, this comes directly from the Fund eleven budget for our IRVM program. We did not, we were not able to fill this position last year, so we kind of made do, uh, we don't really want to do that this year. So hopefully we can, uh, find someone to fill that position before May. As far as winter operations, I'll give you a brief summary here, to date, we've had eleven snow events, average for a winter is seventeen. So this would be number of times that the truck plows go out on the paved roads, would be seventeen on average, currently it's eleven. Uh, we've only used three hundred and forty-two or fifty-two tons of salt.
Soon to be twelve.
Year is twelve to fifteen hundred.
Soon to be twelve.
Yeah, soon to be twelve. We have not had any ice storms, we could double that salt usage in one ice storm. Cause we use a lot of, a lot of salt, so hopefully we don't, uh, we have made really good progress on brush cutting and snow trap removal this year, you know, it's not been a lot of frost in the ground. Especially most recently, so we've been eliminating snow traps. Especially most recently. So we've been eliminating snow traps, you know, areas that we could spend a day or two removing drifts. Um, you know, hopefully we'll just be able to make one pass through there with a motor grader in a half hour. You know, with the tree and, and back slope, uh, work that we're doing to prevent drifting. We've been able to do a lot of pothole and crack sealing this winter because of the mild temperatures and we're going to continue to do that as long as we can. Um, and then finally we have been able to get safety and training certifications. I know we've utilized this room. We've utilized public health. We've been playing catch-up on a lot of trainings and certifications that either weren't available, um, due to not having trainers, but also because of COVID, there were trainings that were canceled over the past couple of years. Um, or they were doing some modified version online that isn't really the same. Some of our certifications require testing and they, they didn't have a mechanism in place for that online. So as far as the spring operations that are upcoming, we will be commence rock hauling probably around February 27th. For our spring rock, weather-dependent, um, you know, we may bump that back into March. We do have two bridge deck rehab, one's underway, one will begin in March. Um, we would like to do some re-grades this spring to kind of take care of some of the worst roads that we have because as you know, we've cut that from our budget for the next fiscal year. We are also preemptively extending some culverts on G76 where we were awarded a T-SIP grant to do some shoulder paving. We've had two fatalities on this segus- section of road and we're awarded a half a million dollar T-SIP grant to widen and pave the shoulders in this section. So this spring you'll see some activity there with the culverts being extended and um, the roads widened in those particular locations with the remaining probably happening after July 1 or maybe even in 2024. We are also preemptively making some repairs to the Roberts Creek Dam. Our guard rail, we're starting to lose our guard rail on the north side of the dam. And we have applied for a safety grant to upgrade all the guard rail, which we have nearly two miles of guard rail on G28 that's not, it, that is not new within the last five years. So it doesn't meet the current standards and we have received the earmark grant from the Community Project Fund from Miller Meeks Office for the overlay of G28, which will further put it substandard as far as the guard rail height. So we have applied for a safety grant to replace all of that. In order to do that, we need to repair, uh, some of the embankment on the Roberts Creek Dam. As we look at, a lot of, a lot of the problems we were having as a department that came up during our advisory meeting last Friday, what, or our employee satisfaction meeting last Friday, uh, are related to our time cards and communication. The Service County Engineers Association Service Bureau has rolled out a time-tracking application. Uh, we love the work order application. We use it every day. We use it for more than just work orders on our road system. We're starting to use it for other things. Um, the time-tracking app will be all-inclusive. We believe it's very much tailored to counties because it's developed by county engineers. Um, so it will have a time card piece, time off request, a reimbursement, uh, a communication or notification piece. Uh, it will have all of our departmental and, and county policies implemented. And then it will be, at this point, it's a download and, and upload to solutions. They're hoping it'll be a one-click to solutions, which will save my office staff a enormous amount of time. Cause all, right now we are handwriting time cards, all of our employees, and then Mike, Brian, myself and Tammy all then key manually time cards. And then my review is what Tammy keys into the 400, Brian and Mike are keying it into a spreadsheet. All that gets balanced and it's very, very cumbersome. The employees will basically put in the same information they're putting in now on their handwriting. And then we will just do a review and we will have no data entry from the office's perspective moving forward.
What did that cost you? I mean, that's.
What did that cost?
Yeah.
Well, the, whatever our membership to the association is, like $400.
Awesome, okay.
Attend the conference. Um, so the staff there at the County Engineers Association, they have web developers and computer programmers that have created all of our apps. So we, they have many, many apps online that we utilize on a daily basis. Jake's office even uses some of their apps for our, uh, fixed asset.
Together.
Yeah, so our, our fixed assets. So when we do a road project over a certain dollar value, we have to depreciate it and our auditor, count, our outside auditors even utilize that information. So that's just a service our, our affiliate provides through the Service Bureau and their staff.
Excellent.
So we really look forward to that. Implementing that will definitely come easier with Junction 92, which I will be providing an update for you at the next board meeting on the status of that project and the budget. Um, three projects coming up. And we have two in the February letting, the LDJ turn lanes and G71 overlay. So this would be the bussy highway from Highway 5 to the southwest bussy corporate limit or north, no, northwest bussy corporate limit. And then we are constantly seeking more of these discretionary federal grant programs. I did not apply for the raise grant. I couldn't cash flow the project. There was no way for us to cash flow that. It's a reimbursable grant. Um, to make our project remotely attractive, it was going to become too expensive and, and we have, we basically, we would have to delay everything and for the next almost 15 years that we want to do to cash flow. Um, so I didn't feel like that was the right opportunity. There were some other challenges there. There are other grants that are better suited. I, for our project and our projects, um, the County Engineers Association did receive a $2 million Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant, which we were a part of. So we will get, uh, a action plan created as part of that grant, which, which will then allow us to apply for implementation grants through the SS4A program. So we obviously are glad to receive that. Um, I don't know when the action plans will be completed. And there is no local match for us on that. These Iowa DOT Office of Traffic and Safety is providing the match for all the counties. Uh, there were 96, 97 counties that applied. Polk County went in with the Des Moines NPO. Bayett County was the other county that didn't apply. Somehow they had an action plan already and they received $10.6 million to pave shoulders in their county on their highways. Cause they were able to go after a implementation grant immediately. So there's a lot of money out there. Um, and I have a couple consultants providing proposals basically to evaluate how attractive our projects are. So basically I have a number of projects in mind. Which ones are best suited for which grants? Um, so I'll be looking into that in the near future. Uh, will there be future consulting costs? Maybe to help put together the benefit cost analysis and the grant applications possibly, but I don't know those at this time. But I may, uh, ask for a few thousand dollars of assistance in looking at the various grant opportunities from some of these national firms. Um, a couple of which we have worked with in the past and I'm comfortable working with. Any questions? Thank you.
You do. I don't have anything at this yet. Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks Tyler.
Forward to your, um, next board meeting, Junction 92. Entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Item number 12, Resolution 2023-19, Resolution Authorizing Employee Benefits. Lisa.
This is just the, kind of the final step for you to set the rates, um, for health, dental and vision. Um, those are the rates that we have currently. So dental vision did not see any changes. And then, um, you'll see the changes for the, um, health insurance that, you know, we talked about previously. Right, yep.
I'm going to make a motion to approve Resolution 223-dash-19.
Second.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
McCollum.
Aye.
What are supervisor updates, Mr. McCollum?
Well, I supposedly have a child welfare, welfare decat meeting in Indianola Thursday, depending on the weather, I think.
All right.
Mike?
I had a very good meeting yesterday in our continuing, uh, city, county, school district. Um, monthly meetings, well, not monthly, they're now like more bi-monthly with Knoxville and Knoxville Community Schools, talking about the VA and uh, school projects and city projects. So very good discussion there. We had our first public health meeting with the new board, some new members. All the impacts to public health, which we'll see how that all flushes out, so. And then I think Rachel, we've got a mental health meeting coming up, don't we?
Yes, the 28th.
All right, very good. And she couldn't get me out of being chair, so I'm chair of that again.
My updates would be, uh, we had Iowa Workforce Development last week. Um, there's continued discussions there. There's, uh, a lot of moving parts in Iowa Workforce Development, so we'll see where that, where that ends up. Um, my next meeting would probably be, that's coming up is impact. But other than that, I don't have any further comments. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
McCollum.
Aye.
Raimi.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.